Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Manager's Office has expressed Councilmember Cordero's request to participate in today's meeting remotely. Madam Clerk, can you please provide the council with the necessary information?
Councilmember Cordero is requesting approval from the council to participate remotely in today's open and closed session. Per AB 2449, Councilmember Cordero is requesting remote participation via emergency circumstances due to a physical or family medical emergency that prevents him from attending in person. If council approves this request, Councilmember Cordero must participate by audio and video and must disclose those 18 years or older that are present in the room with him prior to each vote.
I move to allow Councilmember Cordero to participate in today's meeting remotely. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. The vote will be a voice vote. All that's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of March 19th, 2024. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo? Councilmember Cordero?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. First item on the agenda is the public comment period. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on matters not on the printed agenda this evening unless otherwise directed. Speakers will have three minutes to comment. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak at this time? And I have three. We do. So I'll start with Jeremy Mace, Leo DeCassas, and Matt Chirkoff.
Good evening. I'll wait for a second, if you like. Would you like me to wait a second?
No.
Go ahead. Okay.
Yeah, you're good.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council and city staff. My name is Jeremy Mace, captain and local 2020 first vice president. I'm not sure how else to say this, so I'll put it bluntly. Do you actually care what we're saying? Have you been listening to your employees or the Santa Maria citizens who have been speaking up for the last three months? If you're not listening, investigating, or even challenging our statements, what are you doing? Why are you okay with inaction? Are you afraid to make a motion? Why won't you at least vote on one of our six proposals we've offered you? What is the strategy here? You wish to wait us out? Are you hoping that we will go away quietly? Because I'm afraid we won't tire, we won't quit, and we won't give up until we reach anything more than what we're asking for. We're the busiest department in San Luis Obispo and Santa Barbara County. This is the largest city in both counties and the fastest-growing city in both counties. Yet we're the second-lowest-paid fire department. Consider this: The City of Santa Maria's organizational values emphasize treating all people with dignity, respect, and fairness, and recognizing employees as the most valuable resource. Yet the Santa Maria Sun recently reported that the Santa Maria Fire Department was the only fire department, the only fire department in Santa Barbara County that didn't receive annual physicals that were up to industry standard. As our battalion chief Evan Scott pointed out in that article, that neglecting annual physicals is unacceptable and jeopardizes our health and safety. Moreover, despite being included in the fire department budget in 2022, city staff eliminated our annual physicals from the budget. You didn't even have a chance to vote on it. This isn't just about money, it's about respect for our well-being. Let's not forget the 2000 standards of cupboard that highlighted staffing issues 24 years ago. It recommended six stations and seven response units. It's ironic that city staff commissioned another report titled "The Master Plan" this year that just reiterated what's already been said about our department: dangerously low staffing levels. This isn't about pay, it's about health and safety of your firefighters. But when you combine it with our ongoing labor dispute, it's clear that the city has a history of undervaluing its firefighters and disregarding our well-being. We're still asking for fair pay. I'll reiterate: 14.5% behind market. Santa Maria's not broke, but they're not sharing the wealth. Stop blindly following staff recommendations and start asking the right questions.
Thank you. Leo DeCassas, followed by Matt Chirkoff.
Hello, City Council members. My name is Leo DeCassas with the Central Coast Labor Council, AFL-CIO. We advocate for workers across Ventura, Santa Barbara, and San Luis Obispo counties. As a worker advocate and a concerned resident of Santa Maria, I want to voice my opinion that Santa Maria firefighters, the employees that you see here today, deserve the respect for the work that they do day in and day out. Several weeks ago, I had the privilege of doing a ride-along with these employees, and I got to see firsthand the incredible care and dedication that our firefighters put into their work. City Council members, I urge you to recognize this important work for our emergency service members that our community relies on every day by coming to the table and bargaining in good faith. Firefighters have earned their right to a fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt Chirkoff?
Good evening, City Council, city staff. As you know, I'm Matt Chirkoff, President of the Santa Maria Firefighters Association. I'm here yet again to talk to you about the ongoing negotiations process. It's been almost six months since we began this process, and we've only had three formal meetings. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge how busy you must have been since the last City Council meeting. Staff prepared an 1,110-page agenda packet for you two weeks ago, and then they gave you another 1,139-page agenda packet for tonight. Staff is also asking you for an additional $1 million in general fund budget adjustments to fund the ARPA positions that you were hesitant to fund last meeting. My guess is they convinced you. Staff is also asking you to approve an $8 million project along with pay and benefit resolution that costs over $2.5 million. The resolution compensates the fire chief at 28% ahead of the average market, the same market we surveyed with, but we find ourselves 14% behind the average market. The top end of the fire chief pay scale will put him well above any other fire chief in the tri-counties area, and based on what I know of things our fire chiefs have had to endure in the past, that's probably a fair wage. If only you treated your rank-and-file firefighters the same as your executive-level positions, you probably wouldn't know who I am. Also on the agenda tonight is the report for the retreat that you went to in February. One of the biggest takeaways from that report: City Hall is looking for leadership from City Council, and City Council is asking for City Hall to be honest with them. I'll be frank, you're not being honest with each other. City Council members are in charge. No matter what City Hall tells you, you are the ones who are at risk of recall and election. You are the ones holding the bag when those at City Hall leave for other jobs. It's time you grab the reins and you pull back on City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the City Council will now recess to a closed session and reconvene to the regular meeting portion of the agenda at 5:30. Madam Clerk, do you want to read the items?
Item 4A is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to California Government Code Section 54957.6. Item 4B is a public employee recruitment city manager pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.8. And item 4C is a conference with legal counsel pursuant to California Government Code Section
And we will reconvene at 5:30.
Councilmember Cordero, if you could go ahead and log off of the Zoom, and if you would log into the Teams connection, and we'll see you in the conference room momentarily.
has approved Councilmember Cordero participating remotely per AB 2449 for this meeting. I would like to note that the interpreter for this evening is Ms. Miranda. Ms. Miranda, could you please raise your hand back? Thank you. And if you need a listening device, she will have those. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of March 19th, 2024. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Here.
Councilmember Cordero? There you go. Mayor Pro Tem Soto?
Here.
And Mayor Patino?
Here. City Attorney, Mr. Watson, would you like to have a closed session report?
Yes, Madam Mayor. With respect to items 4A through 4C, with respect to item 4A, instructions were provided to the labor negotiator. With respect to items 4B and 4C, information was provided to council. No further report on those items is necessary.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is the public comment period. This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on matters not on the printed agenda this evening unless otherwise directed. Speakers will have three minutes to comment. So I have two speakers. I have Gary Hall and Ernest Armenda. Mr. Hall?
Councilmembers, especially Councilmember Soto, great to see you back, staff and citizens of Santa Maria. My name is Gary Hall. I'm a resident of Rancho Buena Vista Mobile Estates at 2135 North Railroad Avenue here in Santa Maria. I represent the North Santa Barbara County Manufactured Homeowners Team, or NESBIT. Our NESBIT goal remains to provide protection to all Santa Maria mobile home residents presently living in an unregulated rental market where the current model lease program has been ineffective in protecting homeowner equity and maintaining affordable mobile home housing. Achieving that goal would protect mobile homeowners from large rent increases and still can provide park owners with a fair return on their investment. Over 100 other California jurisdictions have enacted effective rent stabilization ordinances and programs that have provided their mobile home park residents with the protection we seek. We continue to ask the City of Santa Maria to do the same. Once again, I want to thank Councilmembers Soto, Escobedo, and Cordero for passing the June 6, 2022 motion which reads, "To examine the model lease agreement, looking for ways to improve it and to look at alternatives." In order to achieve the NESBIT goal, the mobile home residents have reviewed the model lease program and identified and presented to the city four issue areas that need to be addressed, including participation, outreach, enforcement, and financial and economic terms. We are pleased that the city is taking the lead in educating the public about the model lease program. We are grateful that interim Assistant City Manager Wu has already developed his first draft of the outreach plan. The mobile home residents are busy preparing our comments and recommendations that will help ensure the outreach plan will support the outreach goal, which we believe should be, to engage all homeowners in all mobile home parks and make them aware of the existence of the model lease and empower them to become informed consumers. This is no easy task, since many residents, even in the participating parks, don't even know of the existence of the model lease, or do not understand it, or even how it was meant to help them. We, the mobile home residents, are committed to continue good-faith discussion and efforts to now meet the outreach goal and the overarching goal stated earlier. We are ready and willing to work with the city to achieve those goals with or without the participation of the park owners. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernest Armenda?
Ernest Armenda, City of Santa Maria. So for you folks at home, let me start, let me just get this going. We have the former Parks and Recreation Administrator/Manager is now the interim city manager. Now, the former Parks and Recreation Manager worked under Tim Ness, Rick Hayden, I believe that's the name, and Jason Stillwell. Now, those three city administrators have been consistent, ladies and gentlemen, that Tim Ness, that the city was not going broke, it is broke. That was a direct quote from Tim Ness. A direct quote from Rick Hayden was, "We're in a financial crisis." A direct quote from Mr. Stillwell, remember, there's no reason why Mr., the former Parks and Recreation, does not understand this. He's been in the city, been sitting in that corner for the longest time. He's worked under these three city administrators. So the last administration with Jason Stillwell, he came before the city council and he said the numbers are the numbers regarding developer fees, AB 1600 fees. He told you that it was time for you folks to get your act together and start collecting 100%. Now, Mr. Posada was aware of this. At the last meeting, even today, what does he wish to do? He wishes to do, Madam Chair, he wishes to do exactly what Jason Stillwell was telling this, encouraging this council not to do. Mr. Posada wants you folks to waive four, almost $4 million worth of developer fees for that project over there on Blosser, for the purchase of some sports complex, right? We don't have the money. We don't have the money to be purchasing no property. We don't have no money for no sports complex right now. It's unbelievable that we have the current interim city manager trying to get, this is not the way you run a corporation, I know that. And so, you know, I would say the following, look at, things have to change, and either Mr. Posada needs to get this, wow, I can't say those words, Madam Chair, there's no excuse for this, that things have to change. That's why, I don't know if you've been watching, I say get rid of all the city council, Ms. Soto, and you'll have to decide whether you wish to join them. Remember, the districts are made up of small, only the districts can put you in, and there's the districts that can get you out. And it's small, all you need is a certain amount. And I would give warning to each council member, make sure you live in your district. Make sure there ain't people watching where you're at every night at someone else's home. Use caution. Make sure they don't have you on video, because guess what, there'll be hell to pay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armenda. That concludes public comment. The next item is consent calendar. And Madam Clerk, did you wish to say the item that had been pulled?
I believe Mr. Posada has a item.
Mr. Posada?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, good evening. We would like from staff to pull the NMAC 11B2.
11B2, got it.
And we'll reschedule that for a future date.
Okay. Does anyone have any items they wish to pull for discussion? And I had, oh, and I did have an item I wish to pull for discussion, and it was the item that Mr. Armenda had brought up. It's the adoption of a resolution approving purchase and sales agreement for real property. And the reason I wanted to pull that is because we started this in, I'm trying to think back in, it's been seven or eight years ago.
Seven or eight years, yes.
Okay, so over this amount of time, we have been, we have gone out for grants. The county of Santa Barbara gave us a million. The federal parks gave us, I think, another million for this. So we've been setting money aside, we have written grants, and so it's not money that we've taken out of the general fund, it is money that we have been saving over the years. And so, we figured it's going to cost us, what, 12 million, Mr. Posada?
The latest number is always moving up, so it's around a $13 million project, and you are correct, most of the funding is from other agencies that we've applied for grants. And the item that you're looking at today will transfer the property from the developers to the city, so then we can implement our construction project through Public Works. The design for the project has been moving forward over the last two years, and we're at that point now where I believe we're about 90% complete. Is that right, Director Osland? So the project's moving ahead. As soon as we got the property clearance, we'll be able to move ahead with the project.
Okay. And it's something I've been sort of keeping up year after year, every time we get someone that wants to give us another million, so we're up to almost 10 million now for this project.
Correct.
Okay. And I just really want to emphasize this, because when we did the transit station, when we did the library, when we did the police department, we set money aside for those projects. And so, when it came to fruition and we cut that ribbon, they were paid for. And I think this is another, this is another one of those things that we've been doing in the City of Santa Maria, so I wanted to bring that up. Mr. Armenda, I think you wanted to speak on this item? And this is, this is not money that we can use for anything else, so people need to know that. Okay, go ahead.
I know this is only my third meeting, and I'm trying to catch up and get dialed in exactly how you guys are running this corporation. Yeah, and it doesn't look too good. So if I got this right, Mr. Posada has pulled this agenda, this item, correct?
No.
Or you guys are going to vote on, so it's plain and simple, Madam Chair, all that sounds good that you put money away, but in the binder back there, you guys are waiving, part of the agreement is that you're waiving almost $3,242,000 in developer fees. Madam Chair, the previous city administrator, I'll repeat it again, just told you guys that you got to start collecting 100%. This is not the way you run a corporation. I can go without a sports complex, you can put all the money you want. I don't need no football field right now. I'd rather have the money to help out these firefighters. That is my position, but you guys go ahead and run it the way you see fit, Ms. Soto, because remember, it's under your guys' watch. We're just looking at you folks.
No use of such as technique.
We're just looking at you and seeing what you've been doing and what you're about to do. And then the voters will decide what action we're going to take. But I know one thing, you can put away all the money you want, but you've got some starving firefighters back here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, back to consent calendar. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just for clarification, it was item 11B2?
Yes.
Was pulled for?
It's pulled.
For the future meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, that will be the only one?
Yes.
Okay. If there's not other item, I would like to make the motion that we approve the recommendation, the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
With the exclusion of item 11B2?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the consent calendar, and then I have a motion for a second. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero? I'm sorry, Councilmember Cordero, can you unmute yourself?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item will be a public hearing item, Measure A Program of Projects.
Totally missed me.
You missed?
Did you?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The next item will be the public hearing item, Measure A Program of Projects. The presentation is to be made by the Director of Public Works, Mr. Fulgony.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Tonight, we're going to talk about Measure A and its importance in the funding mix for Public Works and the work that we do and the employees that do the work for us. Actually, do I need a clicker? Do you have it? So a brief overview of Measure A. It's a one-half sales tax approved by voters in '08, approved by a 79% majority in Santa Maria. Thirty-year program which expires in 2040. It's funded over $1 billion worth of transportation projects countywide. And 13.3% of the funds is allocated to the 101-135 interchange, and 43.3 goes to North County Program of Projects and 43.3 to the South County. This is a mix of revenues that we have in Public Works to fund various projects and our department. So you can see, there's the maintenance effort, which we're here to discuss tonight, which enables us to receive those Measure A funds. You can see the state gas tax, and then SB1 that has also funded us. And then the general fund has played a larger role over the last year in doing some additional funding, which has enabled us to do some more construction around town. So a quick overview of the revenues associated with Measure A, and these are estimates from SB CAG. And so, we do this every year, we get their estimates, we plug them in, and we provide the maintenance effort, and then this is basically how we plan to spend that money and the initiatives that we plan to spend it on. So you can see, there's a Measure A carryover, which is balance, and then you have the Measure A revenue estimates from SB CAG. You can see they're going kind of up and down. We're anticipating a little bit of a downturn in revenue next year. And then how we allocate the money, going to roadway maintenance and improvements, landscaping maintenance, so trees, things of that nature that are in the right-of-way, and then traffic safety projects throughout town. And when we talk about these program of projects, just know that I'll be coming back to you in June, May, June time period to give you a better overview of what projects Public Works will actually be doing throughout town in a more specific fashion. So the total Measure A allocation over the next five years is around $37 million. 15% of that is mandated to be spent on alternative transportation, sidewalks. 15% of that is mandated to be spent on alternative transportation, sidewalks, pathways. And then just a couple of quick pictures. Measure A at work. We're paving Blosser Road today. There's a whole bunch of different projects around town this year that have been funded through Measure A. And another notable thing that Measure A does is it funds a majority of our personnel for our maintenance crews. And so an extremely critical piece of funding for the Public Works Department in staying ahead of the curve. Just another couple of photos. So the recommendation for this evening is to hold the public hearing, take the public's input on the Measure A local program of projects, and adopt the resolution approving the Measure A five-year, what we call POP, and the maintenance effort. Concludes my presentation.
Any questions from the dials? Mr. Escobedo?
Well, not actually a question, but just a comment. I definitely would like to recognize the work that you guys have been doing throughout the city. I think it's always never enough money to deal with all the huge needs that we have. But I've seen it firsthand, some great improvements on areas that really needed. Still, there's... There has been a big request from District 1 particularly. People requesting their streets to be taken care of. Street lighting, particularly in the northwest, being one of the areas where we have less street lighting in the whole city. I'm looking forward, and I've been sending some areas that I think that we need to work on, particularly from receiving these reports from constituents. But I definitely... I've seen the hard work that you guys have been putting. I know that, as I mentioned, there's not enough money out of it. But I think that you guys have been finding ways to be more strategic on the way that you spend. So I just want to make this recognition.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fulgoni, and I know this isn't city, but... And the question is, on these corners where they're doing all the upgrades and they're putting in new lighting and they're putting in... What would you call that surface that they put in? The...
The arcadedomes, the ADA.
Yes, the ADA. So approximately, how much does that cost?
I think that's about an $18 million project.
$18 million?
Yeah.
Oh, $18 million, okay.
It's pretty substantial.
It is substantial. And that's all done by Caltrans?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would consume many, many years of our entire budget.
Yes, it would. Thank you. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, I'd like to just open up to the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion and a motion.
Oh, so we're on 12A. Yes, we have one request to speak.
Mr. Armenta?
Regarding any landscape projects, I just want to stress that... And to ensure that if we're going to proceed and go forward with landscape projects, that that landscape maintenance not be put upon the homeowners. Meaning, if you have... You belong to the Southwest Landscape District and they're putting more landscape out there, I want to make sure that it comes out of your pockets or some other place and not the property owners. You know, it may sound kind of confusing and I may not have it right, but I know one thing. I want out of the Southwest Landscape District. So any landscape projects that are coming forward, you best find some other source of funding because we're going to vote to get out of the landscape districts altogether, Northwest and Southwest Landscape Districts. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'll close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion and motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve... To adopt a resolution approving the Measure A five-year local program of projects for fiscal years 24, 25 through 28, 29, and certify that the city of Santa Maria will provide sufficient funding in the 24, 25 budget to meet the Measure A maintenance of effort requirement.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Measure A five-year local program of projects. Any further discussion? Yes, Mr.?
Just to remind Councilmember Cordero that he does need to state that there is no one over the age of 18 with him at this time. Yeah.
Yes, that's fine. There isn't. There's no one here at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Okay, I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. The next item will be a public hearing item, zoning tax amendments for the extensions and permit revocations. The presentation to be made by Planning Division Manager, Ms. Edie. Good evening, Ms. Edie.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So tonight, I am going to be presenting to you the recommended zoning text amendments to Chapter 12-35 of Title 12 of the code. This first item is regarding time extensions and permit revocations. The ordinance amendments were reviewed by the Planning Commission on January 17th, where they were recommended for approval to the city council at that time. The permit expiration and time extension section would be amended to clarify the process of when permits are established following approval and the process for filing a time extension if a project has not been implemented after three years. Currently, the municipal code limits the number of years a project may be extended to seven years, and then after that time, the permit is expired. So these amendments would allow the Planning Commission or the city council, whoever was the original decision-maker on the project, to extend the permit if findings are made to allow that to occur. And the findings that would need to be made are that there has been adequate due diligence to implement or complete the project, or there are significant economic factors that justify the additional time. And there would be no limit to the number of extensions that could be granted as long as the findings to extend the permit can be made. Additionally, a new section addressing permit revocation would be added to the municipal code along with these amendments. And this section specifies the process for revocation of planned development permits and conditional use permits. And under this section, permits may be revoked if the approval was based on inaccurate or misleading information, or more... One or more conditions of approval of the permit have been violated. The permit timelines have not been complied with, or phasing has not occurred, or the permit involved a conditional use that's been abandoned. And so prior to revoking the permit, a public hearing would be held. And the decision to revoke or reinstate the permit with conditions is also appealable. So that completes the staff presentation. The recommendation is that the city council introduce the ordinance amendments to Chapter 12-35 of Title 12 for first reading and then continue it to a future meeting for the second reading and adoption. And I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions of Ms. Edie? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Can we go back one slide? Please.
Yes, let me see. There you go. Yeah.
So when it mentioned action to revoke permits are appealable, what... I mean, what does that mean on you guys's link?
Yeah, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Escobedo. So our Title 12 of the municipal code includes a section regarding appeals. It would come in... It would mostly apply to a project that went to, let's say, a planning commission. And if the planning commission were to revoke the permit, then the applicant would have the ability to appeal that to your council for another determination.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to ask, why are we doing this?
Yes, Madam Mayor. So in reviewing our code, we do look at it annually. And we identified that the current provision that we have for time extensions, which limits it to the seven years, actually, we should not be doing that. We should be allowing applicants to extend projects if the findings can be made that they can do that on a two-year basis. And so when they apply for that, they have to include in the application the reasons for the extension. So that was the reason for that. And then we also just didn't have a section regarding permit revocation. And that is common to have in the code. It does serve a purpose occasionally. We don't need it very often, but it is good to have there in case we do need it.
Because I can think of one instance where I... And I think Mr. Cordero also, where we called periodically because nothing was being done. And we both said, you know, you need to call the applicant and tell them to get going on that project because it was an eyesore. And so had we not been able to get him going, that might still be sitting there. And that was my concern. And this will take that away. It'll give a discretion to whoever wants to just let it go on and go on and go on.
Correct, yes.
So that is... That was my concern. And I know Mr. Cordero shared the same concern and had called periodically on that. And I don't have to mention the project, you know it, and so does Mr. Wu. Okay, any other questions?
Ready to make a motion.
Okay. And thank you very much, Ms. Edie. So any further discussion from the council? Seeing none? Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I apologize. Point of order, we do need to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Any... Anyone?
We do have one request to speak from Ernest Armenta.
Mr. Armenta?
Yes, I'm going to get mine. I don't apologize. This is what I do. I'm good at it. I just need a few more meetings to get dialed in. All extensions and repeated extensions should have a fee included on top of what they already paying. No freebies no more, Ms. Soto. If you want to... If you need time to extend it, then you've got to pay another fee. That's the only thing I'm saying is because it's time that everybody starts paying the full amount 100%. If you want... You wish to extend your project, you come back to the planning department and you pay an extra fee. And every time you want an extension, you're going to pay because that's just the way we conduct business and that's my recommendations. But you guys are in charge. Okay? Thank you for letting me speak, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Okay, so I had a motion and a second. Madam Clerk? I just want to... Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we moving to discussion or...
I already called for discussion. Go ahead.
Okay, yeah. We jumped into... Yeah, just... I do share the concern of, you know, giving extensions, unlimited extensions to projects might actually can affect the... Those projects to come to a reality. I do share that concern. And definitely if we pass... And actually, I do agree with Mr. Armenta on if this passes, it would be appropriate to come along with a fee. I think that's a fair... That's a fair request. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Okay, Madam Clerk?
I just want to be sure we close the public hearing.
Yes, I close the public hearing. Any for the comments? We have a motion?
Yeah, I...
Okay, motion, second? Okay, Madam Clerk, now you can call the roll.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
No.
Councilmember Cordero? Councilmember Cordero, can you unmute?
Aye.
Thank you. And Mayor Patino?
No. The next item will be another public hearing item, zoning tax amendment for accessory dwelling units. The presentation to be made by Planning Division Manager, Ms. Edie.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. So these... This next set of ordinance amendments is regarding accessory dwelling units. This is for, again, Title 12 of the city's municipal code. The Planning Commission also reviewed these ordinance amendments on January 17th and recommended approval of them to the city council. So just to refresh everyone's memory, accessory dwelling units are... Or ADUs are residential dwelling units that provide complete independent living facilities and are located on a lot that contains an existing or proposed primary residence. ADUs may be rented but for no less than 30 days at a time. They may be attached or detached from the primary residence. We also have junior accessory dwelling units, or JADUs. And they are a residential dwelling unit that is no larger than 500 square feet in size. And they are required to be located within the space of a single-family dwelling or in an attached garage. They are only permitted in single-family zones, and the property owner is required to live on site. And they may also be rented for no less than 30 days. So the proposed ordinance amendments are in response to some recent updates to state law, specifically Assembly Bill 2221 and Senate Bill 897. Jurisdictions have the option to adopt their own ordinance to regulate ADUs and JADUs. And if an ordinance is not adopted, then jurisdictions must follow the state legislation. And the California Department of Housing and Community Development reviews the ordinances for compliance. And it should be noted that ADUs and JADUs are counted towards the city's regional housing needs allocation arena. And just for some background, so the city's existing ADU ordinance was adopted by city council in 2018. And then there were amendments adopted to comply with state law changes that occurred in 2020. And then additionally, there were amendments approved in 2022 to respond to additional changes to the state law. So there are frequent changes to the law, and so we try to bring these updates to your city council regularly so that we can include those within our municipal code. So the ordinance is proposed to be updated to clarify the number and type of ADUs that may be permitted ministerially under the state law and also some of the front yard setback requirements. So in the single-family residential zone, you can build one ADU and one junior ADU, but they have to be located within the existing space of the single-family dwelling or accessory structure. So that would be a conversion of space within the home into the ADUs. And then you can also build one detached new construction ADU. But there is a size and height limitation to that. So it's 800 square feet maximum size with a 16-foot height limitation and four-foot setbacks for that. And then on lots that have multifamily units, ADUs can be located within portions of those structures that are not used as livable space. And then you can also have a maximum of two ADUs that are detached. And those changes are consistent with what our code currently has. Our code is just being updated to clarify those requirements. And then one item that came up in the recent legislature is a clarification on the front yard setbacks. So ADUs can now encroach into the front yard setback. Let's see. I'll keep going. Okay. ADUs can encroach into the front yard setback if the setback itself precludes an ADU of 800 square feet from being constructed there. The 800 square feet is really the key there. And a 16-foot height limitation as well. And a 16-foot height limitation as well.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Escobedo. Mr. Escobedo has a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So just on that, on that, that point, the setback, so that means that the, that you can actually build ADU in the front yard? Basically get rid of the front yard and build an ADU? Is that accurate?
You can, if, yes. It can encroach into the setback. So what we're seeing is maybe someone that has a 750-square-foot ADU and they start constructing it complying with the setback, but then maybe 100 square feet of it or more needs to go over that to get to that limit. And as long as it's under 800 square feet, you can do that. That's under the current state law.
So that means that if a house decided that turned their front yard into an ADU with this update, with this modification, with this state law requirement, they won't be able to do that?
Yeah, yes, in certain circumstances, they would be able to do that. We do look at them on a case-by-case basis, but the state law does require us to allow that.
Okay, thank you.
So some additional changes to this current set of amendments. So this item regarding the height modification, we're actually recommending that we lower the height. So currently, the ordinance allows detached ADUs to be constructed at the height of the zone, which is 25 to 30 feet. The state law allows jurisdictions to adopt a lower height, but it cannot be any lower than 16 feet. And so what we're recommending is an 18-foot height limitation, and that was a recommendation that the Planning Commission had for the height. And then on the building size, so currently, the ordinance allows detached ADUs to be a maximum of 1,200 square feet. And the staff recommendation is to lower that to 850 square feet for a studio or a one-bedroom, and 1,000 square feet if you have two or more bedrooms. And the state law does allow jurisdictions to adopt that smaller size. And then attached ADUs would be the same as what's currently allowed, and that's basically 50% of the floor area of the primary unit, the primary residence. We're also proposing to add some new objective design standards for ADUs. We currently have some standards in there, but they're not considered objective, meaning they say recommend or may, they do not say shall. And so we're adding, we have in here some new standards that require materials, colors, and roof pitch to match the appearance of the primary dwelling, windows and doors that may not have direct line of sight to an adjoining residential property, and an open space area that is required. That's actually existing in the code now. We added a standard regarding lighting. So exterior lighting fixtures are required to be directed downward and essentially like dark sky compliant and fully shielded. And then we also have a lot coverage limitation for detached ADUs. And this would apply to detached ADUs that exceed 800 square feet, that they cannot exceed 10% of the total lot area provided. So that adds a few additional standards that we don't currently have. The state law also changed regarding the permitting timelines for ADUs. So now, within 60 days of the date that the city receives a completed application for an ADU on a lot that has an existing single-family dwelling, the city is required to approve the ADU permit application or provide a list and writing of the items that are deficient and a description of the remedies to correct those to the applicant. And this timeline does not apply if you're constructing a new residence at the same time, because you have to have the residence in place first. So that is the, that completes the presentation. And staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance amending Chapter 1256 of Title 12 for first reading and then continue it to a future meeting for second reading and adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions here? Ms. Escobedo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the biggest conversations and constant conversation I also have in my district is because Northwest is particularly mostly residential. And residents have been asking about why are we allowing all these ADUs to just pop up? And so, I mean, you guys have, I would like to, I would like for everybody who's watching us to share a little bit. I've been having a lot of conversation and explaining to them why, you know, what suddenly that happened and what regulations and basically the, how much power the city has in ADUs, in junior ADUs, construction.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Escobedo. So the City of Santa Maria is required to comply with the state laws regarding accessory dwelling units and permitting accessory dwelling units. And I think in the, earlier in the presentation, I mentioned a few of the Senate bills that are involved. It's Government Code 65852.2, if anyone wants to look it up. And so, yes, we are required to comply with that. We are required to permit ADUs. But also, as I mentioned, our jurisdiction does have the ability to adopt our own ordinance, which we have. And that does give us some local control under certain parameters. And so the ordinance amendments that I presented this evening, you know, they, we do have some changes in there to try to get, I think, to a higher level of standard regarding architecture and the ability for the ADUs to match the primary residence a little bit better and be of a better size and scale for the neighborhood.
Yeah, and that's, and I think that's, it's important for our city to have the ability to, I mean, to have the ability to decide how we're gonna grow and what's gonna be built. And but then, you know, we keep getting these updates from the state, taking away big portion of our power on how to, what to do and how to do it. So yeah, just something I've, I've been having constant communication. So I'll be, I'll be sharing, and people, people call me, they will be watching us tonight on this particular item because it just suddenly wasn't since 2020 maybe that people just like start popping, popping. So it is not that, that we suddenly said, okay, everybody can build. But there were some scenario, a situation state-wide and, well, actually county-wide in terms of housing. So, so yeah, so definitely it's something I would like to, if there's no other comments, I would like to move on.
I want to make some comments. Okay, I'm seeing ADUs coming up where between maybe two small little houses right in the middle, so they're almost joined. So we have an ordinance, you're not supposed to put your trash cans, they're not supposed to be visible from the street. There's no place to put your trash cans next to your house. We're not required then to have parking. So people are parking out in the streets. Trash cans are overflowing, the sewer system, the water, everything. And the impact that it's had to the city, I think, has been very, very negative because you don't have, you don't have neighborhoods anymore. And I think it's really sort of sad. The state has come down. And I'm on the Housing Committee for the state. I go to meetings and people are, and people from all walks of life that are coming together and they just really don't like it. And they're complaining about it, but it's pretty much a done deal. When this first came to the city, we said the ADUs, the person living in the ADU had to be related to the person in the primary residence. And that, that went away after about a year. The governor said we could no longer do that, so.
The parking is bad.
The parking is bad. People complain about the parking all the time, and they think that we here are doing that. It's our fault with the parking out in the street. But anyway, and just different neighborhoods. I know in your neighborhood, that was an issue with the parking. But thank you very much, Ms. Edie.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
When it comes to the ADU height changes that are being proposed, I believe that in the report it says that they may not exceed two stories. What if a resident wants to build on top of their house, on top of their garage? Is that, would that apply here?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Soto, they would be allowed to build to the height of the zone district. So there's a lot of different scenarios that we look at. I'm just thinking about different ones. We don't see as many second-story additions, but they could do a second-story addition. I don't think three stories would be available though because it would go too high for the zone.
Right, but if it was a single story.
They, they could potentially add, add an addition to the home. But again, it would be limited by the height of, if it's attached to the dwelling unit, it would be limited by the height of the zone district. And typically, in residential zones, it's a 25 feet. So it's difficult to get, you can't really get to three stories there.
And this one, I'm sorry.
That's okay, go ahead. Are you finished?
I'm finished.
Sorry. But this one, it's, we're talking about the limit of, the height limit would be 16.
18.
18.
For a detached ADU, it would be 18.
For an attached, it's 25.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay. Any other questions with Ms. Edie? Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
We do, Madam Mayor. We have one request, Mr. Armenta. And we can just open the public hearing.
Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Mr. Armenta?
Mr. Armenta, City of Santa Maria. You guys seem kind of confused, like it's a lot happening here and everything's being thrown at you. If you don't have to act tonight, Madam Chair, if you don't have to act tonight, then maybe you folks should study it more. All right, because you folks seem like you guys are kind of confused and there's a lot of you guys are throwing out there unknowns. I know one thing, I, my block over there, East Donovan, we have two-story homes. The parking's terrible, like you said. And you know what I mean? They have everybody there, but only on certain parts of town. Other parts of town, it's, they don't even have it. But maybe, Ms. Soto, maybe you need a little bit more time. You guys can do whatever you want. But I think you guys are, maybe if you, if you don't have to act tonight, I'm gonna recommend that you guys go back and do a little bit more homework and then you guys get your act together. And so us people that live out there won't be coming back to you, attacking you. Thank you.
So I'll close the public hearing. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you, Ms. Edie, and I know we are the ADU capital, I think, of the state. So, and that I'm not confused, I'm just like, it's mind-boggling. How many ADUs have we done in Santa Maria?
So we, since 2018, we've approved 1,526 ADUs. And out of those, 1,030 have been finalled.
Okay, and I go to meetings and people will say, okay, we've got 12 over here. And other cities will say, oh, we've got six here. And I, and it's like, oh, well, tell you in Santa Maria, it's up in the hundreds. Yeah. Thank you very much. I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I move that we approve.
I'll second.
There has been a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
He is saying. Mayor Protem Soto?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
I'm gonna say no, just because I don't like this. And I know it's gonna go anyway. Okay, thank you. Next item will be a regular business item, 2024 through 2026 citywide priority workshops and minutes. Staff reported to be made by interim city manager, Pasada.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, good evening again. Back on February the 19th, council members and department staff, as well as some members of the public, got together at the Menami Center for a day-long session on looking at goals into the future. One of the things that we looked at were where is the city going? So you should have all received the minutes from Jan Perkins, our facilitator for the day. And I just wanted to take a minute to kind of recap those, the overall broad goals that were adopted and then also the very specific goals for the next two years. So very quickly, the four broad goals gathered from the council and from city staff. We're looking for long-term financial stability, community quality of life, planning and infrastructure, and organizational wellbeing. Those are the four broad goals that the city and staff and the public had a discussion on at Menami Center. When it came down to the, there was some really good discussion. And I heard a lot of feedback from the department directors that were in attendance and from the council members that they appreciated the opportunity to meet with the council members, talk about the topics, you know, their subject matter experts in, and to share the, where they saw the city going over the next few years. The upshot of the discussion for the day was for the council to come up with their four top goals for the upcoming two years. So if you bear with me one second, let me get to those. So the goals, in no particular order, that the council adopted was a new approach to economic development, providing opportunities for youth, providing public safety resources, and establishing a staffing plan. Each and every one of those four top goals had a lot of conversation behind them. I think the minutes did a very good job of documenting the comments that were made, not only by the council members, but by staff. And I think these are very achievable and manageable goals over the next two years for, for the city. So I wanted just to kind of lay the foundation for some of the items that you'll be hearing next because these items do relate back to these goals. And we'll leave, we'll conclude my comments at this time and happy to answer any questions or any corrections you might want to make to those minutes that were provided. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Pasada? Thank you, Mr. Pasada. That was a lot, really a great exchange that we had. Madam Clerk, do we have any correspondence or requests to speak?
I believe that we do have a request.
Oh, I do, okay. Thank you.
And another.
What?
And another.
No, 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 no.
To request a speak, Madam Mayor.
Yeah. I'd like to open up the public hearing. And Matt Chirkoff?
Yes, two.
Yeah, this is B and C. This is.
That's correct.
Yeah.
13B and C.
Okay.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, okay.
You should have gotten two.
I do, but one's 13B and one's 13C.
Okay, I apologize. Then Ernest Armenta is the one.
Yes. Okay. Okay. Mr., you had 13A or 13B?
On this issue, right.
This issue, okay. Mr. Armenta?
I just, real quick, remember, we decide about the new approach to economic development. That's us, the voter, we're gonna decide that come election time. I make it very clear, the only way approach, the only approach, the safest approach for the city, Ms. Soto, is to remove all the council members. Yeah. And I don't know if that may include you too. Because guess what? We decide. Because your approach right now, in my opinion, and this is only my third meeting, it's not working. It's not working. Everybody's upset. There's division. We can, we don't even, you can't, we don't even see the SNP O A. Matthew Silver, he doesn't even come over here and defend. No one's here for the private department. That's priority number one for us. So you mean, I just, I share, you guys can make the decisions you want, but come election time, we're gonna decide what route we're gonna go. And when I say heads are gonna roll, they are. I can't find no reason why to keep Mike Cordero, Mrs. Aguilar Hernandez, or Mr. Escobedo. I can't find no reason why to keep you here. So I just wanted to share with you that we're gonna going to make that decision. And Madam Chair, and Ms. Soto, if you wish to join them, you can, but I think them three have to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armenta. I'll close the public hearing. I bring this item back to council for any discussion or questions. Ms. Escobedo?
No, no.
Okay. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I, I move to approve the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion is made to approve the recommendation and second. Any further discussion? If not, Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is regular business item, consideration of a resolution authorizing the retention of seven limited-term positions currently ARPA-funded. Staff report introduction by interim city manager Posada.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Joining me today will be interim chief human resource officer, Don Jackson. She'll be giving the report. I just wanted to do a little bit of an introduction. So, as you know, we brought these items to you at the last council meeting, and we were asked to, you know, bring back some more information. So, that is the purpose of our presentation today. I just wanted to note that the positions that we're talking about, while they were limited term in the sense of the ARPA program, that they were filling important voids that we have within our human resource and finance department to be able to manage and support all the employees across the city. So, keeping in mind the goal, one of the goals of the four goals is staffing, that we need to work on a staffing plan. This is a component of, of that staffing plan that, that we've developed. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Jackson, so she can talk through your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Posada. Ms. Jackson?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. So, upon council's direction issued at the February 20th meeting, staff has brought back additional information regarding the previously funded ARPA positions that were assigned to human resources, city managers' office, and the finance department. We've brought forth a recommendation to approve an increase to the allocation for five full-time equivalent confidential technicians, two full-time equivalent business program leaders. So, I'll offer a brief overview of the human resources and city manager positions, and then I will turn it over to the interim finance directors, you know, Bradford, to offer information regarding the positions and finance. So, the two business program leaders for human resources are currently dedicated to tracking leaves and managing recruitments for the city. The recruiting position has been critical to creating efficiencies in the recruitment process and providing more timely assistance to departments who are filling vacancies. Our leaves manager is essential to assist employees and departments with a variety of leaves, modified duty accommodations, and the interactive process. Each leave is unique and requires continued tracking and communication with both departments and employees to maintain legal compliance for the, excuse me, for the city and to meet the goal of returning employees to work. The two confidential technicians for human resources assist with these employee services and leaves tracking. So, in addition to supporting recruitment, the confidential technician in employee services also assists with new hire orientations, processing personnel transaction forms, and enrolling employees into benefits. In leaves management, the confidential technician provides continued tracking, documentation, and follow-up communication with employees to support leaves management, as well as being a backup to the safety officer in tracking employee COVID cases. The position for the city manager's office, which is a confidential technician position, currently assists with invoice processing for city manager's office, front desk coverage, and assists IT with tracking assets. And with a growing need for staff support from the IT division, this position is intended to shift to fill that need and be crucial to procurement, ordering, receiving, and tracking equipment and citywide staff needs for IT. And in addition, these human resources positions are a critical part of the enterprise resource planning project that you will be hearing about a little bit later. Their subject matter expertise will be used to build the proper parameters into the system. When not working directly on the system, they will work to continue the day-to-day work of others who are supplying their own subject matter expertise in building the system. So, their work on this will provide a more optimal result that protects the city's project investment. With a workforce that has grown 6% in fiscal year 2023 and 8% so far in 2324, the need for central human resources and finance services has also thereby increased. By approving these positions, we protect the efficiencies and improvements to service that we have achieved over the past two years, and also pave the path forward for continued improvements in departmental support processes and achievement of council and city goals. Of course, without these positions, it would be more difficult to
Brought on board during COVID-19 in finance, we have two confidential technician positions who perform the very essential function of paying our employees. So, as we recognize the importance of correct and timely payroll, these positions are able to ensure compliance with all laws and agreements with your unions, timely process the transactions. We have been able, with these two positions, to increase the processing time of payroll to be faster by 20%, which alleviates some of the burden from the departments of having to submit their time to finance faster. So, it is helpful to the entire organization. And we also are able to provide with enhanced training to the departments as their staff that's responsible for payroll sometimes changes. So, those are the functions that these two positions are providing. All of the positions are essential for the central function. And I would also like to mention about the ARPA funding that was originally applied to these positions during COVID-19. As of the end of the federal declaration of COVID-19, the staffing is no longer eligible for ARPA funding. So, by defect, we already are funding this with our general fund funds. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't be spending their entire allocation of our ARPA. We would just be realigning that to other eligible uses. And we're not asking for any additional budget increases with this item for the current fiscal year.
Any questions from the council?
Yes.
Oh, question, I just have, I have comments.
Okay.
To clarify, these positions are currently filled.
Correct. All of these positions are currently filled.
Thank you.
Questions, Ms. Escobedo? Yeah, okay. Let me say, request to speak. I'll open up the hearing. Matt Chirkoff?
I just want to mention, Madam Mayor, it, this item is not a public hearing, so it'll just be a comment.
Okay. Mr. Chirkoff?
Good evening, Matt Chirkoff, San Maria firefighters. I just wanted to highlight something in this budget item, or in this council item. There is current funding in the existing budget to fund these positions through the end of the, the fiscal year. So, it seems a little premature that we're now talking about authorizing $879,000 for the next budget. That should be something incorporated into the public budget hearings. That's, that's seven full-time equivalent positions at $879,000 from the general fund. I just want to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak? None. Okay.
There are none.
Okay, thank you. I'll bring this back to the council for any further discussion or questions.
Yeah, I, I'd like to clarify that when the council met and talked about staff plan, we talked about filling positions with middle management, because we are really weak in that section. We don't have people who are being trained to be the successors for the next department leads. And that is an area where we're really weak, and we haven't really spent a lot of resources and money. I have an issue with this, because the, the goal is to have middle management, not HR technicians or finance. As I sat there and I listened to the description of the jobs, it was a lot of assist, enhance, track, enroll, assist. We would all like more assistance. However, spending $879,000 on positions that we knew were temporary wouldn't be responsible, in my opinion, at this point in time. I think it's premature, and I think it should be part of the budget. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Soto, did you have a?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
If I may. How would us not moving forward today with this item, not approving these positions, impact the work that, that we were planning for the, the transition into, what is it, the ERP?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Soto. When others in human resources need to offer their subject matter expertise. So, it would greatly impact the, the efficiency at which that work is completed and would necessitate us going outside to hire even more folks to fill in.
Thank you. And how much, and, and this budget, or this item is directly, is directly tied to ERP, and that includes a new payroll system that we are looking?
Correct, yes.
To transition into?
It, it will include payroll, some leaves, and, and basically HR functions that have to do with hiring and getting people paid benefits as well.
Currently, how many HR staff members do we have?
We have 10 total staff. That includes our safety officer as well.
And, and approving these positions would maintain that staffing level?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Add in five, seven new positions to, to our budget. And I, I see it like, and I do concur with the, with the number. That Ms., Councilmember Aguilar, I must mention, it's, it's, it's a lot. It's now a couple of dollars. And what about, I said, what would be the difference between, you know, instead of adding two more pe, people for payroll, what about adding just one? And how that, you know, have you guys thought about a middle ground where we don't go all the way to the seven, but there might be this other option that can, that can provide some assistance? Because I do have a trouble with positions that were based on money that is not coming. It's not coming. It's just one-time money. So, so yeah, have you guys thought about something, something like that?
Thank you, Councilmember Escobedo. We, we did consider that. I can speak for the four positions that reside in HR regarding the impact of that if we don't have all of them. Simply put, it will delay progress in the ERP, as well as delay our service to the, to the departments. So, currently, it takes about a month or so to recruit for a position from start to finish. So, we estimate that that would potentially double up to, up to three to four months' time. So, that would be the impact there. The, the work would take longer.
That would be the time if we do not hire them, or if we hire instead of four, two, or?
Right. If we have a reduction in that, it will lengthen the time by, by that much. If we don't hire any of them, it would then be a, a further impact. I don't know if Ms. Bradford would like to speak about finance?
Council for finance and payroll in specific, all of the recommendations that are in front of you with this item and with the next item on the ERP are combined based on an analysis that we have done for the staffing levels that we need for the next two years. So, it's essentially to continue doing the work that we do today, as well as embark on this project implementation, if you approve it with the next item. So, the two positions are factored in. I understand that they are transactional positions at this point, but that's due to the limitations of the system. So, if we were to add only one position for payroll instead of two, that would impact our request for the ERP, and I would treat this ask as a, really, a two-year mark. And then we would be looking at the staffing plan for finance over the next financial plan, over the next two years, to really see what the needs will be for finance department in the long run, once the ERP is here.
I have a, oh, I have a question. If we only did the two positions to get us to the ERP, and then look at this again when we do budget, how would that, what would impact would that have?
So, for finance, I can speak specifically. I would be comfortable with having the two positions for the next two years that are here already, plus the ask that you would be considering during the ERP process. But essentially, all the positions that you approve, that you approved with quarter two, et cetera, will be coming back to you with the financial plan, as you will be looking at the entire city operations.
Thank you.
One more, one more question. I know that we've already invested money into the ERP process. If we delay hiring or the, the positions, or approving the positions, what impact would it have on, on what's already been invested into the ERP?
I think we are diving into the next item.
Okay.
But, but they're related, though.
They're very related.
So.
Okay. Mr. Posada, did you have a?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment. So, again, these are those, those important back office positions that need to get the work done. We cannot pay our employees promptly or effectively. We can't manage our state requirements for human resources laws, workers' comp, leave balances. It is, it has become a myriad of regulation, and the people that we have right now have been doing a very good job at keeping us out of trouble in some of these areas. And I think that they've done stellar work in creating an HR department that is, that, that we've never had. I've been here a long time, and HR used to be two people, you know, and even one when I first started. So, it's, the city's grown dramatically. It's something that, you know, we, we need to consider seriously about that back office group of people that do all the work. Thank you.
But isn't that why we're implementing the expensive software to take care of these things that we're doing manually?
Thank you, Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez. Yes. And that's why the, the small part of the group that you'll be hearing about in the next one are limited-term, again, limited-term employees that will be working on the project. one are limited term, again, limited term employees that will be working on the project for the project. The HR component of it, there will always need to be those people handling the regulation side. The ERP will allow us to track our employees and their training and their leave balances, their payroll classifications or whatever it is, much easier than right now, which is all done by paper or Excel spreadsheet or something like that.
I'm in favor of moving forward with the positions. It's, from what I'm hearing, it's going to be really challenging for us to move forward with the transitions that we have already begun without them. Not to mention that this is also, it's temporary for the term of the project, from what I understand, because some of these positions will be essentially backfilling, right, for some of the folks that will be supporting with the transitions?
So, yes, some of them. And again, we're kind of crossing over because the ERP kind of comes over into that. But I will say for the item that Director Jackson brought forward, those positions would be continuing. They are, they will be spending time in the ERP work that has to get done and they'll kind of migrate back and forth between those positions.
So I think we're discussing the Finance and the ERP. So I think the ERP is what Ms. Soto is talking about in terms of, we've already spent money doing something, we need those two positions to move it forward, whereas the other five positions haven't been discussed. Or in terms of the ERP?
Yes, and I apologize. It does seem confusing. And the ERP would have come on its own. Well, it did come on its own, but the item 13B would have, would have been dealt with back in second quarter report. So since that didn't happen and it was advanced, that's why you're seeing it here again. Just with a more, it's the same request that we brought in 13B at the second quarter report. It's just with more background information, which was the council's request.
Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So if I'm understanding the conversation we've been having is, so there are seven positions and out of those seven, there are two that would be essential to really take advantage of the Enterprise Resource Planning System project implementation. And that's a project we already have been putting money into. So I would definitely, I would recommend, according to what I heard, to move on with those two positions and then come back during the budget to discuss the addition. Because at the end of the day, it's going to be seven more people that are going to be full-time employees that they were supposed to have been temporary employees. And come back with the main budget for, and discuss the, these other five positions that would be.
I could agree with that.
Ms. Jackson?
Yes, thank you. Just to clarify, the positions in human resources are also essential to working on the ERP, building the system and putting the parameters in there that we need for the HR functions of that system. So they are also essential to the project.
So I think what we need to do is have a full understanding of the project that we're moving forward, that we've already invested money in, and talk about the positions that we're going to need for that, not say, well, we're extending these positions because we have temporary money for this and so we're kind of just letting them stay over because we need them. It's really because we're implementing this process that we haven't even talked to, which is the next item 13C. So I think it'd be a good idea, if we can do it today, to talk about the system, what the needs are in the positions that we need to build for the next two years to address that, not carry over the existing employees.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Posada?
Maybe what we should do is continue this item after hearing 13C and then bring it back for you to consider.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Yeah, let's move.
So we will continue this and we'll go on to 13C. So that's a regular business item, consideration of a resolution authorizing the additional funding necessary to implement the city's Enterprise Resources Planning System. Staff report is to be made by Interim Finance Director Bradford.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The report in front of you is the Enterprise Resource Planning System Implementation. The majority of the work will be within the Finance Department, but that would be short to say that it's a Finance Department project. It's really a citywide effort that will involve all of the departments and will really transform how the city transacts within itself, within the internal operations of accounting and human resources. So we are working very closely in partnership with human resources as well as with support of the Information Technology Department. So what is an Enterprise Resource Planning System? Enterprise Resource Planning System refers to a comprehensive information technology system that integrates core day-to-day business processes for the organization. In local government setting, this primarily refers to core internal administrative processes such as accounting, budgeting, procurement, and human resources. The scope of the ERP encompasses these core financials for accounting and finance, the budget and financial planning element, the business assets tracking, project and grant management, utility billing, cash sharing, and then on the human resources side, the human resources capital management, that's all of your employees, the compensation benefits, talent and performance, learning, as well as payroll and time tracking, which all of these items would be completely automated with this investment. So the project history and the funding is that the city began to set money aside with fiscal year 2019, 2020. Over the last two financial plans, the city had set aside $4.9 million and 165 of that has been spent to date on developing the specifications for the project and the systems as well as selecting the vendor that's proposed in front of you today. So that leaves us with $4.7 million that's available in already allocated budget towards this project. To give you a little bit of background of the history of the RFP and the selection, the RFP or competitive bidding was issued in October of 2022. There are five proposals that were submitted. Two proposals were from different implementer partners, but for the same system, Workday, which is the recommendation in front of you today. There was also an Oracle system, an SAP system, and a Teller system that were proposed. A selection committee comprised of Finance, HR, IT, and many other departments participated in the review along with a consultant. And the solution that was recommended through a rigorous process was the Workday solution to be implemented by Cognizant as is presented today. The proposed ERP project components are as follows. All of the systems that are being proposed are software as a service, which means it's not on-premises, it will not require additional service in the long run, it's cloud-based platforms. Workday will be the solution for all finance operations and human resources. And then we have two specialized systems. One is SpryPoint for utility billing and another one is Teller for cash sharing. All of these solutions will be seamlessly integrated into the Enterprise Resource Planning System. So transactions will be entered in only one part. And these modern systems will actually also allow the city to integrate even beyond these solutions, but to other automations throughout the city because these are modern flexible systems that can actually be integrated. The project timeline is as follows. We are proposing that the project would kick off in June of 2024 and we'll run through the fiscal year and we'll end for the Phase One in June of 2025 for a desired cutoff at the fiscal year so the transition is as smooth as possible. So Phase One includes all of the core financials as well as utility billing and the cash sharing functions. The next phase is the Human Resources Management piece as well as payroll and time tracking. That will begin or is proposed to begin in January of 2025 and would be aligned with the calendar year, which is the preferred method for our payroll. So that corresponds with the tax year for our employees. The ERP project business case, why do we need the ERP? So the current financial system, Eden, was implemented in 1998. The system is at the end of its life and will no longer be supported as of May of 2027 by the vendor. The human resource system is limited in functionality and cannot be integrated with Eden because Eden doesn't have that modern functionality. The current system lacks modern capabilities for automated business processes, which leads the city to still be utilizing paper-based processes or side systems such as Excel spreadsheets, workflows through email, or file sharing. The system lacks efficient controls forced by electronic processing and single point of information entry. Core internal administrative systems of Finance and Human Resources are not integrated. And the current system lacks modern information technology capabilities that would allow the city to integrate the system with other workflows in the city. So the benefits of this investment, the life of an investment like this is estimated to be at least 10 years. So this is a long-term investment. Through implementation of the modern technology, it will lead to more efficient business processes, real-time data, enhanced transparency, and control to safeguard the business assets of the city. The city is growing and the ERP will reduce the need for additional staff to continue to grow with the city. And the ERP will implement modern efficient business processes and allow for economies of scale through automation. The project costs are as follows. The implementers cost Cognizant, which would be the city's partner. Cognizant is a partner of Workday and they specialize in implementations like this. So they do implementations like this for, as their business and help municipalities throughout the country. The cost for that is $3.9 million. There is another piece for Workday that's specific to their implementation, that's one-time fee of $300. The software licensing for two years will be $729,000. And we are asking for the additional staffing level for a fixed term of two years throughout this project, to a tune of $1.5 million in Finance for six positions, Human Resources, almost $900,000 for three positions, and then 100% dedicated to the project, Information Technology, Project Manager at 400. The ERP workroom improvements and new computer systems, that's creating space for this project at the old PD station. So we have some minimum requirements to make it workable at 50,000 and then computers for additional staff at 60. There are some costs that are not included originally in the contracts that are in the report in front of you. And those are travel costs for the consultants to actually come on site. We will be limiting their, that's pending, to absolute mastheads and it will be really beneficial for us to have a consultant on site. But most of the project will be saving those kinds of investments by being able to work with our consultants remotely. We are also asking for a contingency of $200,000 for any amendments that may need to be happening throughout the implementation. So the proposed budget amendment impacts not only the general fund but all of the operating funds because we are servicing as Finance and HR all of our city operations. Therefore, here you see the breakdown between different funds. So for example, the water fund would be paying $580,000 and then at the very bottom, the general fund would be picking up almost $2 million of this additional cost. The total additional ask today of the budget amendment is $3.4 million. This organizational chart shows you the magnitude of the investment in a project and the time that it will take to implement the system that will be yielding overall benefits and efficiencies to the city. So what you see on the right in green, that's the team from Cognizant Collaborative Team. That's the implementers who do this for a living. And this is their recommended model for successful implementation. So that's a cost of about $3.9 million. On the left, you see a mirror image for the city partnership investment into this workflow. And you can see that we are essentially asking for the same time investment from these consultants, partner, implementer, as the city. So the additional ask that we are asking today for the staffing to backfill, the left side in gray, is a total of $2.9 million. So that's a million dollars less than we will be spending on the right side of the consultants to work hand in hand on the implementation piece. So as I mentioned, we are asking for six positions in Finance, three positions in Human Resources, and one full-time project management, which is coming from our IT department, to be 100% dedicated to this project. A lot of the positions that we are asking for in Finance are transactional in nature because we are looking for the staff that's to play the role of the experts to be working on a project. They won't be 100% of the project, so we're going back and forth. So we're not asking to double our staff to do the work that we do today and also do this implementation, but we do have the necessary additions in order to ensure that the city implements this investment successfully for the future. So the recommendation today is to adopt a resolution approving the master services agreement with Cognizant Worldwide for implementation of the ERP, to adopt a resolution approving the master subscription agreement with SpryPoint for utility billing, approve a resolution for Can-Am Technologies, also known as Teller for the cash sharing, adopt a resolution ratifying the master subscription agreement with Workday, which was signed by interim city manager Alex Posado in January 3, 2024, and to adopt a resolution approving a budget amendment in amount of $3.4 million and establishing 10 full-time equivalent positions for the limited term of two years. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Bradford. Any questions? When would you begin implementing this?
The implementation is scheduled to be kicked off if approved today in June of 2024, this summer.
If we don't approve it today and we wanted to wait to budget, when would it get implemented?
Because it's very important to align the project with the timelines of a fiscal year and then a calendar year for the payroll and HR side, that would push us out at least a year. So you would be looking at June of 2025.
Questions? Mr. Escobedo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just would like some more clarifications in regards to positions. We're talking about 10 for two-year term. And these employees would come from outside the institution or are already in, already working for the city of San Marino?
All of these positions, except for the project manager, in this case, who is actually in audience here, James, would be new employees that we would be hiring to join the project.
And going back to the past item where we're asking for, you guys were asking for seven positions. So, I mean, it's, I would like some more clarification that we're not going for 17 new positions, which are, you know, 10 for two-year terms and then seven. Yeah. How would that, how would that work? I would like more clarification on that.
So if we were not to approve the other seven So if we were not to approve the other seven positions, then I would like to recommend amending this recommendation to add the seven positions just to the ERP project. So essentially, we are asking for those 17 positions for at least the two years.
Yeah, and that's what I have a problem with. I think that we should, you know, this is obviously needed. This is technology from 1998. It's difficult to approve something so expensive, but I think at this time, being with the budget constraints, it's smart for us to just get what we need, which is to make this go and run, not the extra positions. I don't think that would be smart. I don't think the taxpayers would like it. And I question it for that reason at the last meeting as well. Like I said, we would all like to have extra people, but we only have so much money and so many resources to go around.
Yeah, and I, I mean, it's definitely 17 positions, even two-year. I do have, I do share the concern in regards to our, our budget and how things are going. I think it's, this project looks something that we, we do need because that would help the, and the fact that our temporary positions, I think that's something that I would be in favor of, of these, of these implementation, the whole one, two, three, four, five recommendations. But I just wanted to clarify that because I know that we're going to talk about the other item, that we move it. So that's just something that right now I'm trying to link because I know there, there were these conversations and we were just like going back and forth.
Yeah.
So I want to just clarification. But I think this is, this is something needed and there's already, it was already approved in 2019 and, and there's some money already, already there. So, yeah, I, I think it's, I would be in favor of moving forward with the, with the recommendation.
Ms. Bradford, okay, so we, we're dealing with Tyler Eden as its core financial systems in 1998. How are we doing, for instance, example, how are we doing payroll absences and how are we doing time tracking right now? Is it through spreadsheets?
Thank you, Mayor. That's a very good question. The time tracking right now at the city is done on paper-based forms throughout the departments. The departments do bear a lot of responsibility of processing those papers and getting the entries into a format of Excel that's needed for finance, which is then translated or uploaded into Eden to generate the final file and actually process checks for our employees. So with time with the ERP implementation, it will take more analysis over the next two years as we implement on how the processes will be changing. But there definitely will be a lot of emphasis on business process reengineering. You could expect savings or redirection of the time that staff throughout the departments right now spends on payroll towards other more meaningful tasks. As well as in finance and HR, we'll also have a lot more real-time data, better reports, better analytics, better transparency. So for time, the transition would be quite significant for the, for the city where all of the time tracking will be transitioned to be in fully electronic. So somebody could clock in on their smartphone, on their computer. There is lots of functionality there, which will incredibly enhance the process for payroll and the time that's required for it.
You know, and I'm not, I'm certainly not a techie. Anyone can, can testify to that that knows me. But I am just, does, is it actually going to take us two years? I know we went through this with Motorola and we did the same thing to transition. Is it going to take the two years, James? I do, I do trust your opinion, so, okay. So that means it would take me even longer if it was to take you two years.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Escobedo.
And yeah, well, something that I mentioned, Ms. Bradford, is that the fact that with these kind of programs eventually would save time for employees to be focused on other subjects and not going through these papers and papers. And you have this stack of, of papers that when you're trying to track down what happened five years ago, you, you would never know what's, or you would take some, couple of more hours on taking care of that. Is that, is that right?
That's absolutely correct. Right now, based on the fact that most of the records for finance and HR are essentially housed in paper. So if you would imagine tracking some question that you have from an analytical perspective, it would actually take pulling those folders out of our drawers and doing that analysis versus with a modern system like this, it's real-time to date data to where you can have queries and have all of that information at your fingertips.
Thank you. Any other questions right now? Madam Clerk, we have one request to speak.
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Thank you, Matt Schurkop, Santa Maria Firefighters. First, I want to say $8.2 million. That's a, it's another big project, how they keep piling up. It looks like the request is for an additional $1.95 million from the general fund moving forward. And it's, the report stated there was $4.9 million previously allocated. I think it's important to, to clarify, since it wasn't in the report, how much of that $4.9 million was from the general fund? So we can, we can understand the, the breakdown of that. I can agree and, and confirm interim finance director Bradford's comments that we deal with paper and it's entirely frustrating for, frustrating for us, as I'm sure it's frustrating for you, and, and often it results in our folks being inaccurately paid and underpaid. So I'm here to support the finance side of this project because my folks can't rely on accurate pay. And that's in addition to the 14% behind market. So they have to literally guess and check sometimes some of these numbers that are on the pay stubs. The pay stubs, they actually leave out decimals as well. So if you just look at the existing pay stubs and you do the calculations, you're always off because they don't include the decimals on the columns. Also, it's, it's rather rich. We just heard in item 13A, council's priority was long-term financial stability and also their priority was public safety resources. Just another example of general fund monies on a big project going towards something other than their employees. And thank you, Councilmember Escobedo. You asked a great question. 17 positions is between this item and the previous item or the next item, 17 positions. The city's known for doing more than less and apparently that's only in the rank and file, not in City Hall. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Bring this back to the council for any discussions or questions.
I have a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we approve 13C Enterprise Resource Planning System project with six full-time technicians, three HR, and one project manager.
Okay, so you're doing, are you doing B and C together?
No, I just did three C.
Just three.
Because that's what the presentation said.
Just, just to clarify.
Just three C.
Madam Mayor, just to clarify.
Yes.
You're, you're moving the five recommendations as, as outlined, and you're defining those positions, is, is I understand it? Is that correct? That as, as they were presented to you?
There's five.
So you're doing the five recommendations?
The five resolutions.
Well.
Resolutions.
That's your, that's your motion, plus you're defining what those 10 positions are. Is that my understanding?
Yes, because that's what the presentation was.
Okay.
Excluding item, I'm not including the positions in.
Correct.
13B, which were the other 17.
Correct.
Seven.
Yeah, 13B.
Okay, thank you.
So we're just, we're just dealing with 13C. Okay. Got that, sure. Okay, do I, do I have a second? Oh, I have a second. Ms. Soto? Okay, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you please call a roll?
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Cordero?
He's saying aye, yes.
Aye.
Yes. Mayor Patino?
Okay, back to 13.
Sorry. There you go.
What was that? I didn't.
Councilmember Cordero was clearing his room and now he's reopening it, so.
Okay, going back now to 13B.
We're ready to make a motion?
At the end, we're moving to another meeting.
We need to make a motion. So I would move that we deny the adoption of resolutions to approve seven positions, personnel, and operational changes.
I thought that we were moving that item to another meeting?
No, we just, we were just moving it after this, after the C.
Oh, okay.
As we were moving after 13C.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Posado.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the suggestion was that if you would like, you can move it to the budget process and we'll include those positions in the budget process, which you will be seeing shortly.
Well, I think you can still include them.
Exactly.
Even if we deny it.
Okay, so do you want to just deny? Do you want to move it to the budget process? What would you like to do?
I'd rather just move it to the next budget process.
Move to the next.
Can I have a motion?
Do you want to do a motion?
I move to make, to move item 3B to the budget.
To 2024.
To be appropriated in the budget, which it would have been.
And I'll second.
Yeah, okay, it's been moved in second to move 3B to the budget process. Any other questions, discussion? Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Potem Soto?
Aye.
Councilmember Escobedo?
Aye.
Councilmember Aguilar Hernandez?
No.
Councilmember Cordero?
Aye.
And Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Next item will be, be a report by interim city manager Posada.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, let's see. Sorry, I had my wrong glasses again. So your next meeting will be the April meeting. And I, I apologize, I don't have my UAI here, do I? Oh, there it is.
It's all second.
It's a different color. Coming up, our, your April 2nd meeting. Again, we'll have a couple of closed session items for you, several proclamations coming up, including the kickoff of the Elks Rodeo Parade that we, or the Elks Rodeo Campaign. There'll also be a couple of consent items on the transportation maintenance agreement with Caltrans. The leisure needs assessment, the contract for leisure needs assessment, the update for, it's, it's now been almost seven years since the last leisure needs assessment, so we'll be working on that. Technical amendments will be brought forward by the city attorney's office and we'll be working on a, on an economic development report. April 16th, again, in closed sessions, it'll be recognizing by the, recognition by the chamber of the businesses of the quarter. Couple of more proclamations, including National Day of Prayer. There's also a, a report coming your way on commissions and boards. We'll be providing you with attendance and vacancies. There are vacancies on those right now, and so we really would like to try to make an effort to get those filled if possible. So we'll bring you that update. Those are the major items that will be coming up April 6th, April 16th. The urban manage, the urban forest management plan will be coming from Recreation and Parks. That brings us to the main meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's, oral reports of city council members. Mr. Escobedo, can we start with you?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On March 16th, I attended the Hope Village Ribbon Cutting ceremony. And that's it for my report.
That's it, okay.
Thank you.
Mr., okay, Mr. Aguilar Hernandez?
Nothing to report.
Hmm?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Mr. Cordero?
Mr. Mayor, I have no report because of my time in being convalescing, but I do have the closure. If you want to come back to me on that or you want to do it yourself?
I will, I will come back to you on that.
You'll take care of it. Okay.
On March 5th, I had a meter, meeting with the, with Mr. Kellogg and people from the arts, performing arts issue and to see where we want to go with that. On the 7th, I attended a LAFCO meeting, on the March 8th, Fighting Back San Maria Valley Board Meeting. And on the 9th of March, Livable California, which is a teleconference, which is throughout California and it's on a Sunday. March 10th, I did not do that. And then on March 16th, I attended the Hope Village ribbon cutting across from the board of supervisors. I wanted to, and I've been wanting to do this for a while, and then I'll give it over to Mr. Cordero. But on the, our 100th anniversary for the city of Santa Maria, and you'll see this beautiful geranium. And I wanted to let people know that David Lemon, who, who died and his funeral was, and I was unable to attend, but I had contacted Mr. Lemon and on the 100th celebration of Santa Maria. And Sa, and we've always had the geranium as our flower. And so I contacted him and said, can you do a geranium that's called the Santa Maria? And I thought, you know, if you don't ask, you don't, you don't know. So he was able to come up with this, this geranium. And it was called the Santa Maria Centennial. And so we do have a, have a picture here in front of you. There's really a, a geranium. They, I was given, I was given the plant and you can see this picture that I was given, this beautiful plant. And my husband said, no, you can't take it home because it'll die. So I gave it to Mayor Larry Labanino and it has still survived. So, am I smart? So anyway, I just wanted to say thank you, David, for, he brought so many beautiful flowers to the whole country. And he happened to live in Longhoke and he was the geranium king. And so who better to ask? And he was, and I, I just wanted to say thank you, David, very, very much. So, and he was born in, he was a true Irishman. He was born in Dublin. And so he had an Irish accent. And I want, Mr. Cordero, I want you to close it up for us.
I, can I interrupt really quick?
Yes.
I forgot, I did do the first pitch for the Little League South Side.
Was it good?
It was good.
Good.
The Ventura family showed up and they're super tall. And they threw the first pitch, I threw the second, and they said, you did better than him. So I was pretty proud of myself.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Cordero?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, I'd like to take this opportunity, and it's a great honor to, to say what I have to say here. It's to close this meeting in the name of retired Santa Maria Police Lieutenant Frank Salazar, who passed away last weekend. Lieutenant Salazar, I've started here many years ago and worked with some notorious people in our history, including Joseph Tenno and Diaz and so many others. And Frank was working here for 31 years and a good part of that time was in the detective bureau. He was a unique individual to work for. He had his, his own way of doing things and it was, it was a lot of, I did a lot of learning going through him and the, the city is better off because he was here and we're at a loss now that he's had to leave us. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. May God rest his soul.
Yes, what a fine person. They gave so much to the city of Santa Maria. Thank you, Mr. Cordero. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes tonight's council meeting. Good night.
Thank you.